We'll have the Lincoln County High School FFA come forward and they'll give the invocation and pledge of allegiance and I'm glad they're sponsoring. Mr. Puck and Ms. Burnham are here with us as well tonight, but if y'all will come forward and kick us off, tell us about FFA and do the invocation and pledge, please.
Would you bow, all bow your heads with me, please?
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us come out tonight. We pray for the decisions that our leaders make tonight. Thank you for the farmers who provided, who provide for every, for our everyday needs and thank you for our organization that honors agriculture. Thank you for your son, that dot on the cross. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please rise. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with eternal justice for all.
Thank you so much for allowing us all to be here and share the evening with you about our FFA chapter. I'm Hillary Hefington and I am currently serving as the Lincoln County FFA chapter president and I would like for all of my fellow leadership team to also introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Caroline Gerald and I currently serve as my chapter's reporter.
I'm Matthew Graham. I'm serving as the sentinel for our chapter.
I'm Jay Patterson and I'm serving as the chapter vice president.
Hello, everybody. My name's Emma Claire Wright and I am the Lincoln County FFA secretary this year.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Prance and I'm currently serving as our chapter's treasurer.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Morris and I'm currently serving as the co-chairman of strengthening agriculture.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kaylee Sales and I'm currently serving as a building community's co-chairman.
We are proud to share with you several important accomplishments so far this year. We are pleased to share that we have 150 students in our agri-science classes. This is a clear, this is clear evidence that our agriculture program is growing. We have close to 250 students in our program this year. All of the students are FFA members as we have 100% affiliation in our state and national organizations. In September, we hosted our second annual District Green Hand Conference with over 200 first-year members from Huntland, Fayetteville City, Franklin County, Giles County, and Richland. This conference included our first-year members to all the opportunities our programs offer. Our over 15 local businesses were represented during our lunch program. We will be attending national convention in late October in order to receive our national chapter award. This award is based off of 15 different areas of our program of activities highlighting a multitude of our organized events. We are a two-star chapter going through the national selection process. Only 10% of chapters in each state can be considered. Thank you for your continued support of our chapter and agriculture programs. Agriculture truly touches all of us in some way and has the largest number of jobs, jobs in our country. Thank you.
Thank y'all. At this time, we'll begin our September the 26th, 2022 board meeting. The first item on the agenda is consider approval of our September 1st, 2022 board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to accept or approve? Mr. King makes a motion. Mr. Dunn second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose likewise. The next item is consider approval of the agenda and on that, Dr. Heath can let me know that we'll be adding under points of information, there'll be a third grade retention program presented by Dr. Fanning.
Ms. Hunter and I.
Oh, Ms. Hunter. And Dr. Heath, the next will be item eight will be adding Elk River Media for the use of the facility.
Yes.
That's laying on your placemat. The next will be item added under A is board approval for the chair to be able to negotiate any proposed land acquisitions if needed at Highland Rim School. And then item 13, you would be adding Lincoln County High School Girls Basketball for Pensacola, December the 26th through the 29th.
We'll be adding that to item 13.
Item 13. Does anybody else have anything to add to the agenda? Mr. Tucker, do you? Or anybody else? Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Tucker, motion, motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Tallman, second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item, Dr. Heath, is our recognitions for tonight, please, sir.
All right. Tonight, we have our three regular recognitions. First of all, support staff of the month, Mr. Owens from Lincoln County High School.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, board. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to recognize support person of the, of the month for October. And Ms. Melissa Ogle is standing beside me. She's our selection for this award. She's been at Lincoln County High School this her 16th year. She's been the registrar the entire time. Very vital part of our guidance department. I asked her earlier today what she liked best about working at LCHS and she says she felt like she's making a difference with, with the students, with the parents, with the community. So, and I totally agree with that, with that statement. Part of her duties includes getting progress reports ready, report cards. Just, just this afternoon, she sent a email to the, all the teachers letting know when grades were due, when the report cards will be going home, how to change grades if they needed to, and a deadline for changing grades before it had to be done by administrator. Just very thorough, step by step on how to change those grades and not just that email, but all her emails and like that. She ensures that our graduates receive all necessary documents as they get ready for their college careers or attend the military employment. She assists the community when they call. Just last Friday, when we had our PD, I answered the phone about five times and three of them wanted to know dates of our graduates and I just sent those voicemails on to, to Ms. Ogle and she returned those calls today. So, she's constantly taking care of our, of our graduates and also our students that are presently there, presently there. I just want to say a big thank you, Ms. Ogle, for your work. Takes a lot off of me and our administrators, just knowing that she knows when everything is, is due and how to take care and fix everything that needs to be done. So, we just appreciate her and want to recognize her tonight with a certificate and a gift card. Support staff member of the month for October, Ms. Melissa Ogle.
We'll let you give a speech.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. And for our teacher of the month is Ms. Wright from right here at LCA.
All right. Again, it's just like Mr. Owens said, it's an honor that we have the opportunity to come and recognize people in our buildings who do a great job every day. As most of you know, my position is somewhat new to me. There are three major facets to what I do and two of them are brand new and one of them is virtual school. As I began my work, Coach Wright came to me and he said, "I've got your back. I'll help you and lean on me." Those were very comforting words and they were backed up. He did everything he could to make sure that we were ready to go. And I really do appreciate it. He has shown a lot of leadership. He is excellent with parents. He's excellent with students. He's patient and he is very thorough in what he does. It would be a tremendous loss to our system and our program with virtual school if we did not have him. Now, I did ask him to write me a little bio so that I could share that with you tonight and I was going to hit the highlights, but he has one sentence in here that I'm going to read because what you're going to know, all the women in the room is going to know, the important sentence that he chose to write about his career. He says, "I am from Athens, Alabama. I graduated with a bachelor's degree from Athens State University in 2011. In 2018, I graduated from MTSU with my master's degree in administration and leadership. I spent my first seven years at South Lincoln School teaching physical education and head middle school boys basketball coach. For the past three years, I have done our virtual school program while assisting with Falcon Achievement Academy. I have been the assistant boys basketball coach at LCHS for the past three years. I have a wonderful, beautiful wife who, I thought it was going to say principal, but it did, who teaches kindergarten at South Lincoln. We have been married for nine years. We have two amazing girls, Hazel, who is seven, and Hattie, who is three. I love being able to work with students to achieve their goals. I enjoy being able to help them and help them be successful. I enjoy spending my free time with my family. Coach Wright is greatly appreciated. Thank you."
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay. And now for our retired educator of the month, board member, Ms. Veronica King.
This evening, I wanted to recognize a retiree for her many years of service to the Lincoln County school system and to education as a whole. For even after retiring, our system, she continues to work in education. She has a passion for learning and helping others. She received her BS, her masters, and her doctor. She began her teaching in the Lincoln County school system, teaching social studies in 1979. She has served as teacher, school counselor, instructional supervisor, and director of schools. She was the Tennessee Superintendent of the Year in 2015, as well as South Central Superintendent of the Year for South Central District. She has taught as adjunct professor for Montlo, TSU, MTSU, and Lipscomb University. Her dedication to educate, education has awarded her many honors throughout the years. Although Dr. Shelton retired from our system in 2016, she continues to work in the education as assistant director to TOS. Her dedication, work ethic, and enthusiasm toward education has inspired so many, and I can say that for a lot of our supervisors here, so many, and I am proud to recognize her this evening. Do you want to say anything?
I was going to say, you've got to give a speech.
I'm only going to say that I was blessed to have the opportunity to teach here and I think every day, I can't possibly be old enough for my students to have a 40th class reunion. So, thank you very much.
Next will be Ms. Audrey Tyree and Arien Patel doing our student update for the board. Y'all go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Arien Patel and I'm glad to have the opportunity to be here today. Recently at the high school, we had our homecoming week and we had many activities planned throughout the week, including dress-up days, blood building, the Powderpuff game, the pep rally in the square. It was a lot of fun and the students had a great time participating. On homecoming day, we also had FBLA sell donuts as a fundraiser to fund their state competitions. And last week, we also had many clubs, including COSA, work the fair gates to fundraise for competitions as well. Lincoln County also has a new CTSO club, TSA, the Technology Student Association. Last Friday, we also had a football game at Lebanon and we tried to get a school bus to take the students to the game, but we didn't have enough students sign up. But we're going to try again at the next game and hopefully we have enough students that register.
Hi, my name is Audrey Tyree and some other things that are happening is that yearbook made a profit off of last year's yearbook sales and is going to use that money to buy more cameras. Lift LC has already started planning for next year to welcome in the next freshman class. And also, we've implanted, implanted a new policy at the high school, which is bathroom passes during lunch to stop bad behavior. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, guys.
Next item is added is approving for board chair to negotiate any land possibilities or prospects that could come available at Highland Rim property. Dr. Heath, thank you.
Yeah, I had, I did have a person approach me out in the community that was concerned about talk getting out about possible purchase of land. So, I thought we needed to streamline that and, and that would be either the executive committee or the, or the chairman. So, so I made this recommendation to Mr. Stevenson.
And I followed up with Dr., Dr., Mr. Kegel and he said normally that's would be the methodology to do it. You appoint somebody and anything is brought before the board as a whole. I mean, there's nothing that I can act upon individually in any shape, form, or fashion, if it become a need, ever if it comes up. And I think you go back, Dr. Sheldon left, if you remember back when that first tract property at Highland Rim started out, I think at $35,000 and for the whole thing. By the time we got done, it was $56,000 because it kept coming back and forth between the board without a contract. That's what the person's going to hang to and then if the board approves something like that. But it may not be of the need after the committee meets. I think that I'd asked our teacher, I think there are some, I get you some things from the committee that it would be after fall break before.
Yeah, I had a committee member email the other day, the committee, asking about follow, you know, just a little follow-up. So, I, I did follow up. I met with Mr., with the architect, Mr. Cromer, and he'll be able to come back. He's got enough information now. He'll be able to come back to us after fall break sometime. So, our next meeting would be sometime at fall break.
And Mr. Tucker, I've got, can you hear this?
I can.
Okay. I made your, I got to ask you earlier. Sorry. We have a board member that's working but able to do virtually and I'm, he's on the laptop here. But that's the recommendation and do I have a motion to be able to approve me to do that if it so be needed?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I say.
Mr. Dunn, second. Any discussion?
I'm not sure I quite understand what you're, what, go over it one more time.
If the committee meets or after they meet or any time in between, somebody proposes something for the Highland Rim School that they're saying X dollars or whatever, it could be negotiated, say, okay, if you're willing to do that, but it may not be needed. But if we wait till the committee meets and then we ain't got another board meeting until November the 4th, that's another, that's the timeline that somebody could be brought back in the deal, is what it's about. And it may not even need to be, and it may not need to be.
Okay.
But that's the reason.
Yeah. Once it's brought to the board, it ought to be final and firm numbers.
Yes.
Not discussion and go back and forth to the whole board to somebody because that's the, the escalation in price that he mentioned that happened before.
Yeah. Because once it's out there, then somebody else can come and say, well, hey, if you can pay them, I'll pay you that. I mean, that's what we would be trying to negate.
So, you would be the negotiator for?
Just to bring it for the board and then it's, I mean, it's, I have no authority to do anything other than to bring it. That they, they've gotten an intent to sell at an amount or whatever the conditions were to be and then it comes to the board. Any other discussion?
Ms. Chairman, who's responsible for negotiating?
It would be me to negotiate what the contract or intent to sell. Then it comes to the board. They reject it, say they don't want it or anything.
Okay. So, it doesn't have to be a lawyer or anything that has to do the negotiating?
Well, you'll want something drawn up, but that's, that got to leg out because for consideration to be made, there were, you know, you would need something written there or otherwise you'd be defeating the purpose.
Exactly. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So, you, you want some written proposal to come to the board?
That would have to come to the foreboard.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mr. Tucker? Mr. Posey? Ms. Tallman? Dr. Daniel? Mrs. King? Mrs. Hanes? Mr. Dunn? Mr. Stevenson? Aiden Zero?
But then after we get back to fall break, my understanding that Cromer will set up a time then for the?
Yeah, we'll try to get it set up. As, you know, I mean, we'll try to pick a date here pretty soon, but it will be after fall break, the date will be.
Next is our policy section. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we had two policies to review. And the first is policy 4.210, credit recovery. The policy committee approved this policy on first and final reading. And the second was policy 4.603, promotion and retention. And the committee also approved this on first and final reading.
That's a recommendation with committee. Doesn't require a second. Is there any discussion on those that were in the, was in the drive and the reason they're first and final is because it will affect something in this grading period, the reason it's first and final? Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. That's it. That's all the policy. No contracts. Item eight is facility use request. Unless somebody wants me to pull, we've got three. We've got Child Development Center, Fabulous 50s Use from February 4th through 3rd and 3rd through 1323. And Elk River Media, which is on your table, is Tuesday, October the 18th. And they're, they're fitting our grid of what they're charged and the insurance and that type of information unless somebody wants to pull out. Do I have a motion to accept them? Ms. Hanes makes a motion second. To accept them, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Posey, second. Any other discussion on them? All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is textbook committee members. Dr. Heath?
That's been in your shared drive. There's members from every school. The next textbook adoption is mathematics. And for you guys who were at TSB A the other night, I know Mr. Torres been, he went over that in part of his presentation, the whole adoption process. So, I was thankful he did that. But these, we ask you to approve these folks to be on the committee.
Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Dunn makes a motion. Ms. Tallman, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next is consider approval of Lincoln County School Board strategic plan. I know that it was in our work session.
Yeah.
And everything that we've went over in the past as far as what we're looking for going forward. Do I have a motion to accept it? And Dr. Heath, unless, Dr. Heath, you got any?
No, I just want to hold up the front page of it just as a reminder from our work session, you know, what we're talking about there.
Do I have a motion to accept? Ms. Hane, make a motion to accept. Do I have a second? Mr. King, seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. So, that will be adopted and that will be on our link on the website as well, correct?
Yes.
Next is consider approval of personnel authorized to purchase supplies at the state federal warehouse in Nashville. The list is in the drive. Dr. Heath?
The board has to approve this annually, the list of folks who have the authority to do so.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Tucker makes a motion. Mr. Posey, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next one is consider approval of complaint managers. And I've tried, I'm glad I got it right because I want to call it compliant every time I see it. But it's complaint managers and that is in the drive as well. Is anybody, do I have a motion to accept them? Ms. Tallman, this is a motion to accept. Do I have a second? Ms. Hane, second. Any discussion on those? All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is 13 is consider approval of overnight Iowa State field trip request to ban students from Flintville School to participate in competition at Six Flags, Atlanta, Georgia. And then we've added the Lincoln County High School Girls Basketball to Pensacola, December 26th through the 29th. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Dunn makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Posey, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is consider approval of request to declare playground, playground equipment at Flintville High School is surplus. That again has been in your drive in the list of the items. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Dunn makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Ms. Hane, second. Any discussion? How am I doing, Mr. Posey?
Oh, we're kicking right along. I like it.
All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is consider approval of list of books to be declared surplus from the following schools, that is Highland Rim School, Flintville School. And those again is on, in the drive. Do I have a motion to accept? Mr. Tucker makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Dunn, second. Any discussion on those items and the books? All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Now, the one we've all been waiting on is discussion and consideration of continuance for the food service company and start the RFP process for the 2023 through 2024 school year or return to self-operation. I think we have discussed this over the last three months. We've reached back out to Ms. Nos, which was the original curator of our first analysis of our system. It's over the Hamilton County School and tuition program. Her recommendation had come back to stay as it was. Ms. Brindley has brought the thoughts for the process of her stance and especially with COVID and what we went through and what folks are still coming through with the supply change as it is. So far, the, the consensus is that, from my perspective only, now y'all, y'all got an opportunity here as well, is that we put out a request for proposal. Dr. Heath?
Yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with that. I think that, I think it's been a good thing, especially through the COVID process and especially right now with inflationary issues across the nation. Our buying power is much greater than it would have been had we not been a member of, using a food service management company. Now, when we write, when we write this RFP, it's going to be my recommendation that we take out all the fluff and make it, you know, just straight to the point. You know, this, this is what we expect. We expect nutritional meals at a, to be able to feed our kids and that our kids want to eat that food and that, that we have good participation and we do so on a cost-neutral basis. Now, that's a, that's a mouthful and it's hard to do when folks are used to going to, through the drive-through at McDonald's. But of course, you know, number one at McDonald's is going to cost you about $10 and we're serving meals at, at 3.50 or so. So, it's, it's a big difference there. But, and with a lot more strict guidelines. But I do think that the food service management company gives us the opportunity to do the very best we can with that.
Keep in mind that the proposal, in my understanding, we would retain the same personnel setup that we have now.
I would say we'd have to keep that in the proposal, yes.
Oh, then that would be us maintaining the personnel side of the equation because if you go the other route and it's not working well with their employees, we're still going to be responsible for answering to our constituents as to why it's like it is and we have no control over. But at Lincoln?
And just a quick question. Ms. Brindley, would we be able to bring this RFP back to the board next month?
Oh, no, probably not.
The next month?
You're probably looking at at least a two months.
Um, you're probably looking at at least a two-month process to get this done.
To get the R F P done?
We know by the state, once you guys vote and then start to proceed from there. So, it'll be a few months before that.
Yeah. And so we want to do it as quickly as we can, though, uh, to get this process rolling because, uh, you know, uh, last time there were what, five, four or five companies that, that bid on it? And it would, we would keep in there the, it's a five-year, but to be appro, to be continued annually. In other words, each year we'd have the option to stay with it or, or not, so.
Yeah, because keep in mind, we're not going to know what this is. And by the time we know what it is, we're going to be stoked with it. If we go that route because it's going to be too late in the game to switch to any type of self-operation. And I, I discussed with Dr. Heath, we've always been looking at our budget from the numbers we're dealt with. But, you know, we want to try to find that mill equivalent that gets us it. When he says cost neutral, we want it to mean, meaning it's going to pay for itself. And that's what we want to strive to get to is what figure. And the only two ways I've come up with in the discussion is either participation goes up or you reduce cost. And I think the cost is where it's at, so it's increasing participation. But, uh, with all my talking, do I have a motion in either, either format?
I make a motion that we proceed with the R F P.
With a bare bones approach?
Uh, just remove the fluff, as, as Dr. Heath said, but, you know, just, um, continue in pursuit of the R F P for the food service management company.
Mr. Posey makes a motion to go forth with an R F P for a food service management company and, and make it a bare bones approach of just what we need to serve our students. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dr. Daniel makes a second. Do I have any more discussion? Now's the time.
When does the current contract expire?
At the end of...
Of this school year?
This student year. Any other discussion? Roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Ms. Tallman.
Aye.
Dr. Daniel.
Aye.
Mrs. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Hanes.
Aye.
Mr. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker.
Eight and zero.
Eight and zero. We'll, we'll go forth. Next item, uh, is recognition on our financial reports and, uh, Mr. Jackie Pamplin will be doing that. And we want to, again, lift, uh, Ms. Vicky Trentum up with her mom, uh, and she couldn't be here tonight. But again, uh, uh, Jackie, if you'll go forward with it.
Sure. First, we have our one forty-one general purpose school budget amendments. And starting with our first one, uh, this is to set up the Family Resource Center grant budget. It has been approved in E Plan. The state's portion is twenty-nine thousand six eleven sixty-five, which has been the same for several years now. The local match, which is required, is sixteen six fifty-four thirty-five. This is necessary to finish out the, round out the salary, the fixed charges or benefits, and a few additional accounts she needs to, uh, carry out her co, her, uh, grant. The second one is the E Plan budget. Uh, as y'all know, the local match was approved as part of the twenty-two twenty-three original budget. And the total on that, including the, um, the total grant portion, is six hundred ninety-two thousand nine eighty-seven eleven. On our next page. This is revision one for the pre-K budget. Uh, after looking at some payroll estimates, uh, there were some changes made and also additional counts added for other things that they need. So the total amendment on that one was moving money around of thirty-nine thousand five fifty oh one. Our next one is, this is just a correction to a previous amendment from last month, and it was only on the account. There was a typo. Um, and it's just highlighted there for you. The amount stays the same. But we have to do that as a record thing to correct it. Our next one, this is as requested by, uh, Susan Welch, our C T E supervisor. And this was money moved to maintenance and repair of equipment because they needed to repair some lays, if I say that right.
Yeah.
Lace, lays in the, uh, Lincoln County High School shop area. And then on our next page. This one is a total of one hundred seventeen thousand five twenty-seven fifty-four. It is to set up the Safe Schools Grant Budget. It does require a local cash match of fifteen thousand seven ninety. And this will be used for S R O training and also purchase of security equipment and some other things. Our next one, which is a total of three hundred sixty-five thousand nine ninety-two ninety. This is to set up the leaps budget. The lottery after-school program grant budget for this year. Requires no local cash match. And that's all of one forty-one amendments.
Do I have the motion to accept those amendments?
Move to accept.
Mr. Posey moves to accept. I have a second. Ms. Hane, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Okay, proceed on.
Okay. We have our one forty-two school federal programs grants. The first one is a correction to last month's Title Two. There were a couple of typos in there and as matter of record, we have to show that being corrected. The numbers stayed the same. It was just account numbers. Our next one is consolidated administration. It is the final budget. We take the one that's already approved and add in the carryover, and that creates the final for this year. And it's for six hundred forty-five dollars. Our next one is our final budget for Title One. Same thing applies, carryover added. For a total of one hundred twenty thousand three hundred eighty dollars and forty-four cents. Then we have our final Title Two, where the carryover is added, for a total of sixty-five thousand four ninety-five sixteen. And then we have a final on Title Four. Total of fourteen thousand nine oh three sixty-eight. And here we have the Carl Perkins. For a total of sixty-seven four thirty-three thirty-seven. A revision one to Carl Perkins. And then a revision two. We've had a couple of changes as needed. Then we have our I D E A Part D. That is a final on that one. And then we have our final preschool. Which is two thousand three eighty-three ninety-six. And this is just the difference to add that in. That's the carryover. And then we have one finally for early literacy grant. For a total of forty thousand dollars.
I'm out of breath. Carl Perkins ought to be a country music singer, but whatever. Do I have a motion to approve those amendments?
Move to approve.
Mr. Posey makes a motion. Mr. Dunn, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries.
Our next item is consideration of a contract proposal from David Kidd. This is to audit our cafeteria funds and also the school activity funds for twenty-two twenty-three. Last year it was fourteen thousand nine hundred. And this year it's increased by seven fifty to fifteen thousand six fifty.
That report we'll get at the end of the next calendar for the year after they've audited the books of these, all these activities and that, what this would entail. Do I have the motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Mr. Posey makes a motion to accept. Do I have a second? Ms. King, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries.
And then our final is our financial reports. That's September the twenty-sixth. And I have noted in there if there's any changes in this mail-out or coming.
Do I have a motion to accept though?
Move to accept.
Mr. Posey moves to accept. Do I have a second? Ms. Hane, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Thank you. We appreciate it. Have I still got you, Mr. Tucker?
I'm here.
All right. Just making sure. Uh, next item, uh, is Dr. Heath.
All right. Points of information, we have two. Uh, the first one is, uh, last Thursday, I think it was, we, we had our T S B A, Tennessee School Boards Association, uh, Fall District Meeting at North, uh, Middle School and, uh, in Winchester, and several people were able to attend that. Uh, several presentations were made. And, uh, at dinner that night, there was, uh, there was some recognitions. And I believe we had a lot of board members that received, uh, level recognition. I, they recognized folks from level one to level five. At that meeting, they go up to level four. Uh, and, uh, uh, so congratulations. I, I can't remember who all got what.
All of them, but the new ones.
So everybody, everybody got some recognition. So, yeah, so awesome. And thank you guys for the work you do and the, uh, attending those courses and, and, uh, you know, continuation of learning on, on the board member work. I think it's a, it's a, it's a testimony to what you do that, that every, every board member that's, that's not new had, had, uh, got, received some recognition that night. So, appreciate it. Uh, number two, uh, Ms. Hunter, are you ready to, okay, oh, yes, okay. Um, let me pass this around. This is a one-page, if you'll pass, take one and pass it around. Sort of a one-page cheat sheet on what we're going to go over here. You might want to just wait until, until we get done with the presentation to actually start reading through this. Uh, there's, I've mentioned this law before. There's a, a new law, third grade retention law that was actually first passed in two thousand twenty-one. And some modifications were made this year. And, uh, it's causing a lot of discussion, a lot of what-ifs, a lot of, uh, concerns, actually, uh, in, in, in my circle with superintendents and I think with supervisors in their circles with supervisors, uh, across the state. So, uh, got with Ms. Hunter and asked her if she could put a, give us a presentation tonight that has some numbers in it and some talking points. And so, uh, at this point, again, this is a bill that was passed two thousand twenty-one that was modified last year. And, uh, educate, I mean, legislators, what I believe has happened is legislators heard educators saying, if, if the child was ready when they got to me, it would make a big difference. Let's don't pass students on, especially with reading being something, uh, you know, at, at our early grades. So, the, uh, bill was created that unless you scored at a certain level on the end-of-course test, uh, you weren't to be promoted from the third grade to the fourth grade. So, uh, we're going to go through some numbers and then talk about some of the, the inside workings of the bill, if you would. So, Christine, I'll turn it over to you.
So the premise behind this is that, as Dr. Heath mentioned, there are four categories to the performance levels on the state T cap assessment. It starts with below, approaching, meet, and exceed. And if a student does not reach the meet or exceed level on the E L A portion of the T cap assessment, it's, there's an if-then statement. If they do not reach the meet or exceed, then the following conditions could happen. And that's what we're going to see in the next few slides. Um, the best way for me to see it is to look at it through the lens of our students. So, we used the students who were in third grade last year. If this law had been in effect with our third grade students last year, how would that have affected us? So those were the numbers that we used, and that's what you're going to see in these next slides. So as Dr. Heath mentioned, these are the actual laws, the Tennessee Literacy Success Act, and the Learning Loss Remediation and Student Acceleration Act. Those are the two frames of reference that we have. We had two hundred and seventy-seven students who took the assessment in third grade across the district. Of those two hundred and seventy-seven students who tested. These are how many students who scored either below or approaching? Remember, I said there are four categories. These are the students who have scored in those two lower buckets.
And just to interject there, uh, can you go back a slide? So a hundred and fifty-seven out of two seventy-seven were in those bottom two categories. And our kids were the highest achieving kids in South Central. So you can imagine some of these other districts percentage-wise, you know, how many kids they're talking about. If you think about Murray County that has, you know, thirteen or fourteen thousand students and, you know, they were, anyway, they, they would have a lot more to deal with. In fact, everybody has more to deal with percentage-wise than us, but that's a large number. So go, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So, this is the lowest bucket. Forty-six students scored in that lowest of those four performance levels. And it's important to differentiate when we move a little further down line about what it means to score below versus approaching.
So that's forty-six out of the hundred and fifty-seven.
A hundred and eleven scored in that next category of approaching. Okay? And then thirty-two of those students are special ed students. And it's important to keep that in mind because we're going to talk about what does it mean in reference to these students?
Now, now, make sure I'm clear on the data, too. Thirty-two of the total were special ed.
Seventy-seven.
Okay. So we're, we're not saying thirty-two of the ones who didn't score the, the top two levels.
It's, it's thirty-two of the total. Of the two seventy-seven.
Yeah.
One of the two seventy-seven is five oh four. Four of the two hundred and seventy-seven have been previously retained. So, the reason we're discussing all this, you'll find out in just a second. It's a preview of coming attractions. Okay? We had zero of these were E L L. So that would leave us with, out of those two hundred and seventy-seven, a hundred and twenty-four students of these that were in the below or approaching who would need to attend some kind of camp and/or tutoring. Okay?
So it's a hundred and twenty-four, and that's different than the one fifty-seven because those last few slides...
Are pulled out.
Wrap your head around this. Those kids are pulled out. And she's going to explain, or we're going to explain that now. Go ahead.
Okay. We received a toolkit, some guidance from the state about suggested timelines for communicating information out. And so these were the timelines we were given and some suggested template letters. This is just a little frame of reference for you guys, and we're right on track with where we need to be. So this is just some information about how we should communicate, when we should communicate, when we should receive information. Um, the ti, notice the timeline, May nineteen through twenty-second, uh, twenty-six, about when initial data should become available. And that's about when we usually receive raw score information. Um, we don't receive information about when a student is officially identified as below, approaching, meet, or exceed. We only receive raw score information, and the state hasn't let us know yet how we're to interpret that. That's to be determined later. So, criteria for promotion. This is where all of this is starting to come into play. For those forty-six students who score below. This is how they are eligible to be promoted. They need to attend the Summer Learning Loss Bridge Camp. We've had this camp for the last two years. They need to maintain a ninety percent attendance rate at the camp. And demonstrate adequate growth on the post. and demonstrate adequate growth on the post-test that's given at the end of the camp. We've given a post-test, a pre- and post-test at the camp already in the last two years. And they need to go to tutoring all year in fourth grade. And show growth on fourth grade TCAP. Those are for the students who score the below, those forty-six students who have scored below.
So, okay, so I'm gonna recap, so everybody understands. So those forty-six that scored in the very bottom must agree, or must do both of those things. They must go to a summer camp. Summer school, basically, you wanna look at it that way, which we've been having for four weeks, for a certain number of hours a day, ninety percent attendance and show growth, and they must go to tutoring for a minimum of two thirty-minute sessions each week the following year in the fourth grade.
And show growth on TCAP.
And show growth on TCAP, right.
Or could they, or they could possibly be retained in fourth grade.
Yeah, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, so.
Then for those hundred-and-eleven students, they can go to the same bridge camp and have the ninety percent attendance rate. Or if they say, "No, we don't want to go to bridge camp," they just agree to go to tutoring throughout that next year. They still need to show that same growth on fourth grade TCAP, or they could still be retained in fourth grade.
So.
So the biggest difference is not having to mandatorily attend the bridge camp.
Right. So, you know, the below folks have to do both. The, the folks in that next category up, approaching, have to do one or the other. And then what's, what we're saying about fourth grade, the interesting part of that is, anybody that's promoted by going through this route, that does not show adequate growth in the fourth grade, as determined by the Department of Education, shall be retained in the fourth grade. So even though these folks who do, who agree to do this can be promoted from the third grade, they still have to show growth in the fourth grade, or they'll be retained then. So it's, it's a two-year, you know, thing for them.
Well, it's an accounting nightmare, trying to keep up with it all.
And it doesn't matter if they've already been retained, you know, used to, we could, okay.
Okay, you're beating us to the point, go ahead, yeah.
That's a teacher, Emmy.
Yeah, I know.
So, that's why we mentioned those slides earlier that we had. These are the exceptions. So we had those students who were the ELL students we listed. If you've been in the country and had less than two full years of ELA instruction, there isn't, you are considered an exception, so you will not be retained. If you've previously been retained, you won't, you won't be retained again. So that's why we had those number, those four children in that slide. And we mentioned the ELL students that we'd had in that slide that we pulled out. If you have a disability or suspected disability, then you're pulled out. That's why we had those thirty-three students, so that's why we have those numbers in red there. Those are our actual numbers of students that we had. So there, those are our exceptions that the state has identified in this legislation, okay?
Do those students, are they still allowed to have the tutoring and go to the camp, even though they had already been retained?
Okay.
If there's space, yeah. And there should be, so yeah.
Sure.
If there's space, you know, in other words, the mandatory ones would get the first seats, but there shouldn't be a problem with that, I don't think.
We've never had problems in the past two years.
So, a couple of things, problems that we have with this, though. One is that last thing that Ms. Hunter just read, uh, about disabilities or suspected disabilities. So, you know, I think the state, the state has responded to us that, that they're not going to address that. That's gonna be a local decision. If a parent comes to us and says, "I know my child's not special ed, but I suspect they, they are," then we're the ones that are gonna have to make a decision, uh, if, if they fall in one of those categories. So, uh, I do think this bill's gonna change some in the spring, uh, but we have to, I mean, we have to go until it does change, if it changes, as though it's not gonna change.
We have to operate on what we know.
That's right.
And the FAQ that was sent to us just today, one of the questions that had been floating around was, "What if my child just does not take the third grade assessment?" And the answer was, "They are considered as not being proficient." So if they don't take it at all, they're counted as not being proficient.
And, and we were told last week that if they don't take it, then when the retest is offered, they can take the retest, but if they refuse to take that also, then they've gotta be in that category where they have to do both.
So there are grounds to appeal, but it only applies to those students in that second bucket. If you're in the below, there are no grounds for appeal. Those forty-six students, those hundred-and-eleven students, this is how they appeal. Ground one, they have to demonstrate growth in AIMS Web and a standards mastery-based assessment. We do not know what that is. To be determined. Ground two, if they have experienced a catastrophic personal situation.
That would've caused them, on test day, to not do well. And I think the only way to address that appeal is to go back to their benchmark AIMS Web data and see where they make inadequate growth during the year. And, uh, just, go ahead.
But TDUE has to determine that, and they have to establish the rules for that, and the rules have not yet been established. So again, to be determined.
I, I, when, when we started talking about this, I don't know, it was about three weeks ago in a superintendent's meeting, I went back and watched the, uh, the discussion at the legislature in two thousand and twenty-one, when they passed the initial bill. Uh, the initial discussion was all about making sure kids are reading by the end of the third grade, okay? TCAP is not a reading test, uh, it, it tests many other things, it's not just a reading test. So, uh, I think there's a little bit of misalignment in the intent and the test being used. Uh, but this is all stuff we're gonna have to work through, uh, and, and there's a lot of questions out there. But, but, uh, between Ms. Hunter and I, we're gonna meet with the third-grade teachers this week at different, you know, we're gonna go to each school. We wanna send a letter home to third-grade parents this week before fall break and get that ball rolling of communicating this out. Uh, we'll probably, you know, probably put something, you know, we'll get with Fable City and, and maybe do a, a, a combined press release of some kind, uh, for the newspaper, because it affects both school systems, uh, and, uh, and sort of go from there. Anyway, we wanted you guys to be the first to hear before we started rolling this out. Anything else, Ms. Hunter? Any questions or concerns from anybody around the table?
Um, so on your and/or slide, you have adequate growth and just growth. Do we have definitions of what that?
No.
What adequate is, or is one point enough?
As determined by the department.
But do we expect to receive some kind of guidance, or?
No.
No. Okay.
I, I, I think right now, this has become such a hot topic with the department.
We hope to receive, but expect to receive is another statement.
Right now, they're gonna have to be hands-off until, and that, that sort of is an indicator in my mind that the legislature is gonna make some changes this coming year, uh, on this, but it doesn't help us out any in our planning.
So right now, we have somebody that's in the below. And their parents, I mean, they're third graders, so they're, they're, they're not like they can get themselves to school. They, they don't get them to school to have a ninety percent attendance record, then they're just automatically held back to third grade.
In the summer program, you mean, ninety percent?
That's right.
Well, we provide transportation, though.
We do, but we, you know, we're talking about somebody, we, we tell them they're gonna go on to fourth grade if they do these things, and then what happens when that does, when that falls through in the summertime?
We have asked that question, we super, we asked that question at our superintendent's meeting. That would be a local decision.
All right, well, that was, you know, we've, we've made the decision that we will move on if these things happen, so that was.
Uh, and they ma, and they did make it very clear in the meeting I was in, that the Comptroller's Office will be the ones who will be, uh, collecting all the data and, and comparing the number of kids who qualified based on the test results and the number of kids, kids that we actually exempted for whatever reason, and that that report will be made public into the legislature. So, the Comptroller's Office, from what I understand, will be the oversight on this, so it's, anyway.
Yes.
Where are we getting the tutors? Where, where are the, the, the tutors coming from that have to do this every two weeks for a year?
We have tutors already in every school that have been trained.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so we have the tutors already in place. How much cost is that to us?
Right now, we have a grant.
Okay, right now, we have a grant.
The money, uh, if you ask the state where the cost of this is coming, I've gotten two different answers. There will be some additional funds for that, is one answer. The other answer is, it's gonna be in TISA, our new funding formula.
Okay.
Uh, and transportation might be outside of that formula. So, uh, what, what, as I'm, as we're approaching next year's budgeting, I'm approaching it as the, to, to make this, to comply with this law, is gonna have to be within our TISA funds, uh, because our grant runs out in one more year, 'cause we're doing, 'cause we're doing this for like all the elementary grades right now. Uh, but in the future, if we don't have a grant, then probably the only funds we'll have will be for the third and fourth grade, just as you're saying here, so.
One more question, sorry. Um, so if somebody's previously retained in third grade, and they do everything, and they still don't pass, they just get to go to the fourth, you can't retain twice, right?
Yeah, it's, it's not.
Automatically get promoted on regardless of what your scores are.
But she said they would be able to do the camp and the tutoring if there's space for it.
Right, but there's not, there's not another scoring time for them?
If they've already been retained.
They're not held to this law, okay. Is that what you're asking?
Mr. Tucker, if you got any questions?
No, sir, I'm good.
Uh, for the board, I would, I would do this. As we give this information out, if you're contacted by parents, concerned parents, or anything about this, I mean, m- make sure they know that this is a legislative decision. We have, I mean, we have to comply.
Means we didn't ask for it.
Yeah. I mean, we know, we know what the research says about retention and multiple retentions and so forth. And anyway, this is, this is gonna be an issue, I think, this spring, that will, there will be some changes, but we'll see.
They can feel free to email us, email our office. Me. We good?
Mr. Chairman, we are. We're done with that.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to approve.
Move to adjourn.
I have a second. Ms. Dunn, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, for joining us.